We'll call to order the planning commission regular meeting for September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty four. I'll ask the clerk to call roll.
Anderson?
Here.
Andrew?
Here.
Quiet.
You're done?
Here.
The Shane?
Here.
You mean?
Here. Everyone, Anne had a work event that came up kind of at the last minute, was not going to be able to join us tonight. So she is excused, but she did kind of relay a couple of her comments to us. And we'll kind of share when we get to that part of the agenda. Tonight's agenda is in front of everyone. Did anybody have any amendments or changes to the agenda? If not, we have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Report.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Closed? None? Agenda is approved in our packets that was sent out to us over the weekend was the minutes from the August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty four. Did everyone get an opportunity to review them? Any revisions or amendments to the minutes? If none, do we have a motion to approve the August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty four minutes?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
Aye? Closed? See none? That will bring us to our first public comment section. During this time period, if you're in the room, you can come up to the podium. If you're online, just kind of indicate with the hand raised. You can comment up to three minutes on any item that is on the agenda. When you come up, please tell us your name, your address, and then what agenda item you will be addressing. Anyone in the room wish to speak?
And council members, Chris Peterson, seven forty-two Pleasant Street. I want to thank you all for bringing this forward so quickly. First floor residential has always been very important, and I'm glad you're moving forward on this. And I wonder if you consider doing the condos first floor commercial on the water, too? Making the boardwalk an easement because that those are the places where the restaurants and shops should be. I'd say walking the boardwalk is probably one of the top five attractions we have here. So anything we can do to preserve it, I appreciate it as everybody else would. Thank you so much.
Absolutely, Chris. Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Anyone online? See no hands, we will close out the public comments. Luckily, we had no old carryover business, which will take us onto new business. The first agenda item is four fifty Spear Street, a public hearing for special land use for request of a rental of an accessory dwelling unit. This does require a public hearing that will take place. So at this time, I will call to order the public hearing for the four fifty Spear Street and ask for the zoning administrator to give us a summary of.
What is proposal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um applicant is here from four fifty Spear Street to apply for a special land use to be able to rent their accessory dwelling unit. Um, the dwelling unit has been a rental since two thousand and nineteen. Uh, but it is required to come before you guys for a special land use for the new license. The applicant is here tonight. We also have our contract planner, Dave Jurassic, for any of your potential tricky questions.
And I know as you went through and you kind of highlighted where they have met everything and then made even like recommend that you kind of highlight where we would have some areas of potential concern.
Correct.
Be the square footage. So why don't you kind of walk us through that in case everybody hasn't had a chance to read it?
So the um requirements for an accessory dwelling unit, the minimum gross floor area is three hundred and seventy-five. And as measured by the applicant, uh, it's three hundred and fifty-six, I believe. And so that is where there is some concern. It doesn't quite meet the minimum standards for an accessory dwelling unit. So that is that is something to consider. Um, other than that, there was not really any other concerns from staff.
I didn't see any. Okay. Very good. We have the presentation of the applicant, please.
Thank you very much. Few hours ago, I was in Philadelphia talking to eighty-five people, and now I'm I'm back in the microphone. It feels like just a continuation. I'm Paul Whitfield. My wife, Cheryl and I, we live at four fifty Spear, and we own the book nook right down the street. Uh, we had a condo in Douglas for about three years and then uh bought our house in two thousand and nineteen, started renting it, not knowing I needed a special land use permit. And uh, I started following the recent, you know, S T R discussions. And and out of those discussions learned that I needed one. So I did the application. I looked through. Saw that I met everything, so I didn't think there'd be a problem. Uh, the I was going by the tax records. And uh, those were showed uh, three hundred and ninety-four square feet. So I figured that was fine. Uh, Ryan uh, sent an email and said, hey, you got to measure it by the interior. Uh, and when I did that, it was three fifty-six. So that's where we're at. I'm I'm asking uh, for uh, approve on the uh, on the size that I have based on the tax records. I'd I'd note a couple of things. It's it seems uh, you know, the the standard says the space should be measured for living, sleeping, bathing, eating, and cooking. Uh, that's the language. Uh, and I wonder why the exterior walls are subtracted out of the square footage. But interior walls are not. Uh, if I had that filled with a lot of storage space, it would not. And uh, you know, mine is all dedicated to those living areas. So it just it just seems a little inconsistent to subtract out the exterior walls if we're not subtracting out interior walls and in uh, storage spaces. So I, as I said, I request uh, that it get approved. Uh, if if you feel like it couldn't, then I'd request at some point we lower the square footage. Uh, I'm not sure why there is a minimum. Because there's only allowed one on a property. And uh, as long as it meets the fire standards, which have to be uh, passed by the fire department, I I don't know why there is any minimum. If there has to be a minimum, it seems like you know, even twenty-five by twelve is is plenty, uh, which would be eight hundred or three hundred square feet. I got that right? And uh, one other note I'd make is uh, you know, with the S T R uh, discussions. And it it seems like, you know, one one side wins, one side loses. Uh, but ADUs are really a great solution, a win-win. You know, neighbors get neighbors. We live here full-time. Uh, it's our principal residence. We manage the property. Uh, we live there well. While we have rented it, we haven't rented it for two years. The town gets uh, you know, visitors and uh, we give the the resident gets a little help, you know, with uh, making the tax payments and everything. Um, and I wonder how many ADUs are actually in town that don't have special land use? It seems odd that we would require a thousand dollars to get a special land use, which is what I need to pay, yet we have LLCs renting out entire, you know, houses. Uh, and all they need is a is a permit from the from the uh, for a short-term rental. So it it, I would think we'd want to encourage uh, ADUs in in this situation. Uh, and um, I I would think I'd like to see a drop, but uh, even if it isn't, we need this, we need to count in the city because for the language that was passed, those need to come out of the base uh, number of rentals. So any questions?
Questions for the applicant?
Um, just just one house. Did you measure the interior dimensions and come up with the three hundred and sixty-five?
And I have three fifty-six.
Three fifty-six?
Yeah.
Okay.
I stretched, I, you know. I really wanted an extra twenty feet, but that's what it measures from from the interior. If I went to the exterior walls, it'd be three eighty-four.
From the outside of the exterior walls or the inside?
It's inside. From outside, it would be the three eighty-four.
Yeah.
And tax records show three ninety-four.
Uh, three.
The tax records showed uh.
Uh, I thought it was three.
The assessing data, which I think you're referring to.
Yeah, yeah.
It's three eighty-four.
Three eighty-four. Sorry about that. Three eighty-four.
And also, so the the difference, I assume is um, so the difference between gross floor area and gross finished floor area is how it's measured. One's measured from the outside of the exterior wall. The other's measured from the inside of the exterior wall. Uh, I hate to put you on the spot, Dave, but can I ask you a quick question? It says, uh, I'm looking at one five four point oh two two, and I only just noticed this. It says an accessory dwelling unit shall have a minimum of three seventy-five square feet of gross floor area. Um, and I'm looking at the code of ordinances right now. Uh, it doesn't say gross finished floor area, but I could, it's possible I'm in the wrong spot. Obviously, I'm quite fresh. Is that the case?
Yes, yes. I I'm glad you brought that up, and and that's also something I was looking at just before the meeting. Um, when the city updated the um, accessory dwelling unit ordinance and short-term rental ordinance earlier this year, the the language was actually uh, finished floor area in the ordinance several months ago. Uh, during the update process, we actually changed that to to gross finished floor area. And so I I've been scratching my head the last couple of days trying to figure out how this was approved as a compliant A D U and permitted by the city if it was under three hundred and seventy-five square feet. Um, so at that time, when it was approved, it it was subject to the uh, uh, the gross floor area requirement, so it probably did in fact comply. Uh, it just met that three seventy-five, so I I think it 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 did comply at that time. And because um, we changed the the reference to gross finished floor area, uh, that actually is going to penalize the folks that are they're right there at that three seventy-five or or lower. It actually, the the interior measurement makes sense, and I think we had a reason for it at the time. And it actually accommodates those, it's more accommodating to those that are on the higher end of that. So if you're closer to that 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 six hundred square feet, um, and you're you're measuring from the outside, you you it may be too large. So it it I I guess this is somewhat of an unanticipated consequence for those who are just barely at three seventy-five under the old measurements. Now using the new, it pushes them substandard. Uh, but but you're you're correct. Uh, I I, well, Luke, I I think what you're, what you read was the old language for finished floor area in in the new language, in the updated code, and it may not be in in the book yet, but gross finished floor area.
Absolutely. So when when the structure itself was built, it was built compliant. And then we very slightly changed the regulations, and now it doesn't quite comply.
And I think one of the the issues we've noted in the ordinance is is um, there's there's really no flexibility built in because it's it's just says one fifty-four oh nine two J says that the A D U must comply with the requirements of under one fifty-four oh two two W, which includes that three seventy-five, so um, is so any A D U needs to be conforming to the current ordinance to be able to to rent it out based on one fifty-four oh nine two J. I think I think the planning commission, you know, may just consider the fact that this was a conforming structure when when built. And also, we we may want it to do a slight text amendment here at some point to just be a little bit more accommodating to an A D U that is, you know, otherwise uh, meeting fire code, meeting building code, but maybe off by a square foot or two, or maybe non-conforming in in some other minor way. Um, it seems I don't think there's a real public purpose to to disqualifying, you know, slightly non-conforming A D Us.
Yeah, I will say uh, there are plenty of accessory dwelling units that were made a long, long time ago also that maybe go over the maximum square footage of six hundred. Um, so in fact, I know of one uh, accessory dwelling unit that's going to be coming before you guys that has its own utilities. And so therefore, it wouldn't, it doesn't meet the standards because uh, an accessory dwelling unit can't have its own utility. So it definitely would be worth looking at the text and possibly amending some things. It doesn't help our current situation. I think staff's recommendation is if you find it appropriate to approve this item, you could approve it contingent on them receiving uh, variance from the zoning board of appeals. That would be, I think, what we believe is the most appropriate way to move forward, assuming you guys would like to move forward.
Yes.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none. We will open it up for public comments on this application. Any public comments in the room? Go up to the microphone, anyone online? See none. We will close out the public comment portion at seven sixteen when move over to commission deliberation. Thoughts from?
Let's let's kick off. I'm very supportive of this application. I do, we we've had a couple of measurement issues over the last year. And we we, in both of those cases, we made sure that the math was right, whether they had to uh, block off the wall or remeasure. So I like the opportunity to send in the Z B A, but I do like the opportunity to also make some corrections because I think there may be some loopholes there that weren't intended when we when it got changed.
I agree with you.
So do I.
I'm also supportive of what the applicant said about why ADUs are are positive for the city. I thought that was well.
I'm just wondering, because it wasn't approved, I I'm back to the maybe either attorney or David or you, Luke. Um, if it was approved as an A D U under the statute at the time that it was okay, why, simply because they're trying to get, they now need a special land use permit to rent it, to comply? Why does that fact that it's no longer a compliant A D U? Why is that not grandfathered in? Why is that relevant? Um, it was an A D U before he applied. It's an A D U now. Simply by the fact that the city changed the ordinance doesn't change the A D U at all, or the status or the approved status of that structure being an A D U, a compliant A D U.
Correct.
So again, if we have to make him go to the Z B A, I understand that, but I think I think in this instance, since it was a a a approved A D U under the statute at the time that it was applied to be an A D U, he should be good to go. David or our attorney or?
Cause I'm curious of that also because to me, it's like, I'm not really trying to approve the A D R. I'm proving the license.
And that's where that's that's where.
A D R's already been approved, so the fact that it doesn't meet the A D U part, I'm like, that's not what really what it's. You end up having the two of them together, but it's only because of he's coming forward to try to get the license so that he's meeting all the things that we now require.
We had this exact discussion with the previous Spear Streets. And it was like, well, and that's because that's what the words are, uh, that has to meet those rules, even though it's been an A D U previously. And I I felt like, I don't know that there's been any denied on this, so it's a little bit of a process that gets a thousand dollars from our applicant, as he suggested, and it's they're always approved. And as long as it's an approved A D U and it's built, there's not really uh, what what, why are we doing this?
I I don't know. I remember the other one. I don't recall that it was being used. Of course, the structure.
That was a new A D U.
Yeah.
The other one on Spear Street had not been approved as an A D U before.
No, it did not.
And I think this issue, if I can just jump in for a second, guys, just stems from the fact that the section requires compliance with one fifty-four point zero twenty-two W, which now, as David pointed out, has been amended to require the gross floor area. And so although it may have been compliant when it was approved as an A D U, it would not necessarily comply now when they're applying for the S U P to rent it.
So no one's contesting that it's an A D U. Obviously, it it was built, it conformed when it was built. The 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 issue is that the license to to gain the license says that you have to conform with the current standards, and the current standards uh, slightly different than than what was in place when he built the accessory dwelling unit.
Got it. Okay, thanks. And and just to be clear, there's no license in place now. This is a net new license, correct?
This is a what? Sorry?
A new license.
But he would, he he has a certificate for to to rent his accessory dwelling unit, and that's going to expire. When that expires, he'll have to, uh, he can't renew it because the certificate program's gone away, so he'll have to apply for a license. So it's not renewing the certificate. He's not grandfathered in because that.
Not a grandpa. That's.
Yeah, so that that program no longer exists, so.
No question. Luke, is there a cost to go before the Z B A?
Uh, there is a cost to the Z B A. Uh, I don't know off the top of my head, but I can look it up in about five seconds or not. Oh, no, I can't. Sorry about this. Does anyone happen to know the cost of the Z B A off the top of their heads? I'm I'm just going to the fee schedule.
There's a way we can make it that way.
Wait.
Yeah, because that's why I'm trying to figure out, can we have?
Uh, it's sorry, it's an eight hundred and fifty dollar meeting, and there's a two thousand dollar escrow.
Is there any possibility something like that can be waived?
I I would defer to to our planner or possibly legal counsel on that one.
And that sets a really bad precedent. Yeah, I know.
I think that's a city administration question. I mean, that unfortunately, still, there there's a very strict set of standards that the Z B A has to consider. And I know this is something that I think all of us think that's very reasonable to allow for a slightly non-conforming A D U to be approved for rental. When you put on the Z B A lens, it 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 doesn't quite consider the same, you know, reasonable factors that the planning commission would. And so um, you we we certainly could run it by the Z B A, but if they take a very strict look at it, it may not be approved and may not be worth the time and money. So I mean, I I think that's still a course of action that they surely have the right to request. But I think also the planning commission may want to put this on the agenda for for the next meeting just to to say, okay, does a A D U need to be a hundred percent conforming to be able to rent it? And and maybe what it is, is it's permitted if it's conforming, but special land use if it's slightly non-conforming. Um, you know, I'm I'm trying to think of scenarios where we would say this non-conforming A D U should not be rented. And and trying to think back of of why that was put in the ordinance originally, and this this language did not change earlier in this year. It, the language has always said that they have to conform with the A D U requirements to be able to rent it. So that's not a change. Um, the the square footage measurement is. But I think I think there's a a good argument for the the planning commission to reconsider this section and and do a a, you know, fairly quick amendment to this text. Uh, it it and that might just add an extra month beyond what the timeframe for variance review would be.
And David, that's what I'm wondering. If we decided we wanted to amend the text, does it require us to have a public hearing to be able to make the change?
Yeah, it would be a zoning text amendment, so you would have to go through the typical zoning amendment process with a public hearing. But I agree with what what David said, that the the Z B A, though I think this is a very reasonable request is, you know, that would not be guaranteed to be approved, even if the planning commission were to give an approval contingent on a Z B A dimensional variance. And so I think, you know, tabling it and looking at the ordinance, if that's what this body wants to do, may be the the most practical way to handle it, but um, that's obviously up to you guys.
And and Mr. Chairman, one other thing, um, just.
Are you okay with what gets tabled and?
Yeah.
Oh, you have plenty of time. And I mean, partial, and we we want to make sure you meet the standards. At the same time, I also commend you for being so honest, because if somebody asked me to do my measurement and I came in at three fifty-six, it would immediately became three seventy-six, and I would have had no issue.
Said he remeasure.
And I was, if you hadn't have said it.
How about you, Steve?
And if you hadn't have said that you were so meticulous in trying to stretch the meter, I'd be like, go back, go back home, remeasure, and take your glasses off this time. No, it's, but we do.
But what you're leaving it, I I, you know, even if this was a rewrite, I think it deserves a rewrite, you know.
Yes.
Okay, three seventy-five is a lot of square feet. I mean, you can go down to two hundred and fifty, and be a perfectly reasonable rental.
There was.
And you know, I don't know what the minimum should be, but three seventy-five.
There was a, there was a topic brought up about tiny houses, and it didn't really go anywhere, but there was that brought up to it a year ago. But what, why, why the minimum is what it is?
And I can't remember now why it is because there's many, like even hotel suites that are right around two fifty to three hundred square feet that have a bathroom, a bedroom, and a small kitchen. So I I don't recall that.
Okay, if you're a field pro, you know, what kind of size that is, I'm more than a well.
Sure.
I know that. It sounds elegant. It's all looked up.
Right. No, but I think it, obviously, you can tell that, just like they're saying, it's close, but at the same time, you hate to start making exceptions. Cause then the next one that comes in, who's at three hundred and thirty, is like, well, we're not that far off from the three fifty-six that you granted previously.
Yeah, I think if we change the language, it should be if it was, either we change the size.
Correct.
Or we say if it was conforming, if it met the prior standard.
Exactly.
Right.
Um, because there's probably other A D Us that maybe haven't been.
Yeah, but I don't, yeah, but I think we want to tie it to that and not just like, oh, we'll give it a pass. Because it was honest.
Exactly, exactly.
Purport, they might not have been.
And and I liked your way of saying if it was an A D U, an approved A D U and built, rather than making
Right, right.
A bunch of special rules for
Yeah.
On the small side or big side. If it was an approved A D U and it was constructed, then it's.
Well, as we're looking at it, this is kind of, is there a reason why we have a minimum? I mean, I I know why we want to have a maximum as far as not going over the six hundred feet. Or you know, our thirty thirty percent of the home, and then six hundred maximum. But then on the minimum side.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, in in my experience, it's not very common to have a minimum size noted in a zoning ordinance for an accessory dwelling unit. The the maximum is the the more common.
That's what I thought.
Have, um, and and the minimum would simply be the the minimum required to meet uh, building code requirements for for, you know, public health and safety and inhabitability of that unit. So um, you know, striking it all together is an option, or reducing it uh, to down to three hundred. I mean, there's there's a couple of different ways we could look at it, but I I suppose it's not very common to actually have the minimum as long as it meets building requirements. And just one other note, um, I look back at some of our files and and communications from uh, the the S T R and A D U process earlier this year, and the reason that we're we're referencing gross finished floor area now is because we're only calculating areas for living, sleeping, bathing, eating, and cooking. Therefore, we thought it was more appropriate to do an inside calculation because it it would be more difficult to do an outside calculation when we're 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 limiting the number of areas that we're actually measuring inside the structure. So just for, you know, how how can reasonably measure something, uh, we have to do inside measurements when we're eliminating you know, storage space, stairwells, and other, you know, non-qualifying square footage. But but that did create for for those that are right at that that three seventy-five, that it did, that is an unanticipated scenario.
But we would probably become much more like other communities if you just had a maximum limit for A D Us and just did a strikeout of any minimum.
And a percentage of the primary.
Yeah, percentage of primary width, yeah, right. Yeah, because that is important. If they've only got a twelve hundred square foot.
Right.
Then they're still limited to like three sixty at that point. Yeah, it's the lesser.
Wouldn't there be two changes? I I like that idea, but that would be in the A D U approval, and then the talking about what we're doing here with the rental. If it's an approved A D U or whatever, because he's bringing up a future one that's a little bit different. It isn't a size issue. It's the utility issue. It was approved at the time as an A D U. So I think the rental rule should be that it was approved as an A D U previously. As opposed to having to redo it again if they go to rent it.
That's a good point. Did you hear that, David?
Yeah, essentially, if if it's a conforming A D U, or if it's a legally non-conforming A D U, they would both qualify. So if it's legally not forming, that means it was lawfully established at the time.
Right, okay. Would we all be favorable to that if that was brought up in the October meeting? Or at least having David draft something for us to review. We can't vote on it until then, of course.
Assuming this. Assuming this blog post is accurate, um, Michigan minimum size and occupancy standards for ADUs must be at least two hundred and fifty square feet for two people, for couples. While families of four, uh, so this is recommended, so maybe this is not to have, um, to be a minimum of four fifty.
Uh, and when, when it comes to building the actual structures, obviously, um, we'd issue a zoning permit for the structure, but it would then have to get a building permit also. So Michigan building code would take care of the minimum.
Yeah, so I was just saying, but you know, what, like, what are, you know, what are considered small ADUs, so, in Michigan, apparently. Joe, what are your thoughts?
I don't. I'm, I'm kind of siding with the general consensus here where I'm not sure I fully understand why we have an absolute minimum. Three hundred and seventy-five square feet, I think, does, it does sound high to me. So I like the idea of going down the path of what we just discussed, making those two changes. Kind of leaning that way.
Right.
Okay. And Luke and David, is that something we can put on for the, can you have that drafted and we can have that for the October meeting?
Yes. Yeah, but very, very simple and straightforward change. Um, the only other question that came up was, you should we consider uh, rental of, of ADUs as special land uses? And is that something that is going to be a continued conversation or do we just want to focus on these? These items first?
Just focus, this one here seems easy, so let's just do this one. And can we have the change and the public hearing both at the October meeting? Or do we have to, we have to vote as a commission first?
Yeah, so you could hold the public, um, hearing at the October meeting, yes, and then you'd recommend it to, to council, I believe, would be the process for enacting the text amendment. Would be the same process we followed for the STR amendments and stuff like, and, and those similar ones. Um, so I'm looking at one fifty-four point one seven six from the code, the planning commission shall transmit a written report with recommendations within a reasonable timeframe to the city council. Um, with the recommend to accept, deny or modify, um, the amendment proposal.
Okay. So if I'm understanding right, um, what we're looking to do would be a motion to postpone the current application and a motion to set a public hearing for the October meeting on a possible, um, uh, ordinance amendment. Is that right?
Yes.
Correct.
And, and I'm just gonna, I'm, because this is literally being thrown at us as we're sitting here, um, I'm going to spitball for a second about the idea of amending. I'm fine with eliminating the minimum. I don't see a problem with that. Grandfathering in every, every previously uh, approved ADU simply because they were approved, um, I, I see two potential problems. One, I, I'm not sure that approval of every ADU was in the best interest of the city on that way. I don't have an example. Um, and secondly, I, I, I can't think of one. Um, but I wonder if situations change where an ADU that was approved in the eighteen hundreds, for example, um, might not be an appropriate, they approved ADU now. Um, and, you know, I mean, I, for example, I'm thinking on the two utilities and I, I, first blush, I don't have a problem with two utilities, several utilities. Um, but I, I, I just, um, have a little pause with simply an ADU that was approved how many ever decades ago. Um, it's automatically going to be okay as maybe you or a special land use permit purpose here, um. And, and I'd, I'd rather say that now than a month from now when we have that already as part of our, our ordinance, but that's just my thoughts, so.
Dave, do you have a sense of our ADU, um, inventory? And how many might, you know, fall out of current standards in a, in a more than, you know, this tiny way?
I, I don't unfortunately. Um, I think it's going to be across the board in terms of, of those that are compliant and those that aren't. I know even just having, getting some of the ADU information for the short-term rental project, um, was, was difficult enough just to get numbers. Um, and, and the, the assessing exercise, I would have to go through that to get some of the numbers ready to use, what was, was, uh, you know, beyond what we were able to do at that time. So I'm not sure if I could get a, give you a good answer on, on how many are, are non-conforming. Um, I think that's a good, a, a, a good concept to consider, because, I mean, there might be something that's so non-conforming, we don't want it you know, have it automatically be allowable as a, a rental, because there might be a, a, another situation that we're not anticipating. But at the same time, I think if, if we keep it as a special land use now, the special land use process by its nature would, would weed out the cases that are, are, are just not appropriate. So if something came in, it was just grossly non-conforming, but you know, legally went legal, legally established back in, in, you know, nineteen twenty. We could still deny it if it was just a, you know, a very unsafe situation or just had some, if there's some other, um, potential impact from it. Uh, we have the discretion through special land use process to, to deny it or, or attach conditions to, to the approval.
Got it, okay.
I, I can see lowering the, you know, the size, but I would want to do that with more thought. If, you know, if we wanted to, um, because I, I do think we, you know, you need some minimum size for a dwelling space, I think, in our town. I can't, I mean it. Like, I don't think, you know, two hundred and fifty feet, that seems kind of small for a dwelling unit in Sagittak, maybe not, I guess. It would, I would want to know more and kind of be able to visualize that before. And so we aren't considering that right now, right?
No, it's just the. It's just, it would just be a question if we're going to give him direction for what he's going to draft for next month.
Right, so it's, it's the, it's conforming with what it was when it was first approved. And then we need to deal with the utilities or we'll need to deal with the utilities.
But what he's talking about drafting is eliminating the minimums, just having the ADU cannot exceed thirty percent of the primary household or six hundred square feet, whichever is less. Which would be consistent with other communities.
Slumlord places if there's not a minimum. I mean, I, I don't know.
But then again, there is a, there is the minimum in Michigan building code, so.
Okay, so what is, do you know what the Michigan?
I don't, I could, uh, I could probably figure that out if you give me a second, yeah.
David, do you or Trent know what the minimum for Michigan building code is?
I don't. Not off the top of my head, no, but we can look at it, I can look.
Because not every ADU, some people might build an ADU that's just a studio. It may not even have full facilities. They never have any intention of renting it.
Yeah, I think the square footages might vary a bit, depend on, depending on the layout in the, the rooms and the, you know, what, what's you, the, the basically layout and floor plan.
But that is something that you could research and then make the give us some like various options if we were discussing it at the next month's meeting. Either to eliminate the minimum or putting a minimum in. Because I'm just trying to streamline it to where we don't have it go over a couple of different months, but if we have to have it as an agenda item to make a recommendation in public here in November, we'd still be back to you.
Well, munico.com Michigan says the minimum size shall be three hundred square. Now.
That's exactly where I am right now. You got there a little quicker than.
And is that for any dwelling unit? Is that for an ADU? What's the three hundred?
That's, that's specifically for an accessory dwelling.
Thank you. State laws require that ADUs accommodate their inhabitants comfortably, therefore the, for couples and ADU must be at least two hundred and fifty square feet. While families of four are recommended, recommended to have units that measure a minimum of four fifty.
I think that's what, that, is that a?
That's what she pulled.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is, I think this is the actual code.
Oh, you're actually in it?
I think I am. Luke, am I in it?
Uh, it looks like that's what I'm looking at also.
Okay. Three hundred square feet.
If, if you're looking at munico, th- there's multiple jurisdictions that use munico and, and depending on what you tapped on. Uh, the first that comes up to me is from, uh, a town, a, a Scott, a charter township with that same quote.
Okay.
So, uh, munico is going to be, it's going to vary based on jurisdiction and um, I, I think what we can do, I think Luke and I could, could have a conversation with, with the city's building official as well and, and get that, you know, direct interpretation of the building code.
Absolutely.
I would think that would probably be, and then you can make it in the recommendation. We could have the discussion and the approval, what we're going to send to council. And we can always revise, you know, if we got a couple of different recommendations, you can strike it in total, you can put in a three hundred and then we would vote accordingly, correct?
Absolutely.
I'll make a motion to table.
Motion, yeah.
I'll make a motion to table the special land use for four fifty sphere until after the, uh, zoning amendment is updated.
Wait a second.
Second.
Is it a voice for tabling or is it? Don't know.
Yeah.
Is it roll or voice?
I'll do roll.
Do roll.
Yeah. Uh, Anderson?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes. Paul, sorry about that, but. Right, I think it's, thank you for bringing, you brought something to our attention and we need to kind of address everyone's way. So we appreciate that very much. Thank you. Our next item of business is one thirty-three Butler Street. It's a public hearing for a special land use to request a proposed condominium subdivision. At this time, we will call to order the public hearing for the one thirty-three Butler Street. I will ask the zoning administrator to give us a background and summary of the findings regarding this applicant.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so one thirty-three Butler Street, uh, have applied for a condominium subdivision. It came before the planning commission once before in twenty twenty-one and was approved. But due to, uh, the master deed not being filed in a timely fashion, uh, approval expired. So he's back before you today with the same request. Um, staff looked over the, uh, recommendations and found that all the standards had been satisfied, um, and they, oh, sorry, we recommend approval based on the condition that the fire department is also satisfied.
Thank you. Is the applicant in the room? They'd like to come up and you have anything you'd like to address us, please?
Yes, hi, I'm Shimon, Missy, Simon, everybody calling Simon. I own the Chantel Fashion Clothing Store. We just opened this year, also the next door can be an ice cream. I own the building, we bought it four and a half years ago, me and, who became my ex-wife now. And my mortgage will balloon in March, so I would like to sell, get rid of my bank part of the mortgage, leave the SBA, which is locked. So in order to do that, I cannot sell the whole building. It's two condos, living condos, residential and three commercial units on the bottom, which I'm operating to renting one. And, uh, I just need to finish that process and God willing, sell at these couple of units and by March, by then my mortgage will balloon and I would be in another good shape, so.
Okay.
It's time to move forward. Again, I was here, like you mentioned, three years ago, it got approved. Nothing changed. It's no, there's no changes to the structure or the building or nothing added. It's really to separate each unit individually, so I would be able to sell it individually.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you. Then we will move to public comments regarding this application. Any public comments from the room, any online? Seeing none, we will close out the public comments for the public hearing and move to commission deliberation.
Seems that's straightforward.
Pretty straightforward. It's, it's, nothing's changed and it's been approved and it's meets the current requirements. I see no issue not to re-approve it.
That's, that's my feeling also. So anybody else, if we, if that's the agreement, do we have a motion for approval contingent upon the fire department?
I, I will make such motion.
And this will be a roll call, so, as the clerk call roll. Call roll.
Yes.
Patrick?
Call the question.
Yes.
Here and yes.
So confused. It's not call roll, I realize, sorry.
Let's say.
Here and yes.
Yes.
That's been approved. Was it approved?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good luck to you.
Chris, did that take you down memory lane? Were you on planning when it, it looks like, were you the Peterson on planning? Was that a trip down memory lane for you?
Yes. Thank you, have a good night. That closes out our last public hearing. The next item on the agenda is the review of the draft code ordinance amendment and to set a public hearing regarding the ordinance to amend the title X fifteen, chapter one fifty-four, the city code of Sagittak to amend section one fifty-four dot zero three eight C two downtown waterfront preservation district to eliminate the first floor apartments as permitted in special land uses and to amend the section one fifty-four dot one one three to clarify planned unit development modifications of the C two downtown waterfront preservation district and to allow first, and to allow first floor apartments if certain conditions are met through the PUD process. Has everyone had an opportunity to kind of review the recommended changes? You know, what we're really talking about is, you know, in our draft, we did allow that you could have first floor water facing currently. Um, if they weren't like making changes. And so this is just basically kind of stating that you wouldn't be allowed it unless you were going through the PUD process.
Can you ask a question?
Sure.
So if we allow, continue to allow first floor apartments facing Water Street, not facing the water. And they go all the way through the building. So their back door opens out onto what would be in the boardwalk and their backyard or their back area. Can't they still block off? And the idea was that we don't want first floor facing the water because they can block off
But.
the access to the waterfront for the boardwalk. If I have a condominium and I have title from Water Street to the water, regardless of whether my front door faces the water or Water Street, doesn't that keep the same problem of them?
Well, the, you cannot have first floor residential facing the street. It cannot face Water Street. So everything that's front-facing on Water Street would have to be commercial. We do not allow residential on the first floor facing Water Street. We made, when we were drafting the preservation, was that if it was like on the backside of, of the building.
Okay.
Then we allowed potentially, um, first floor residential. And the thought, and the thought was we would only approve it if they gave us public access, you know, the, the right of way would have to remain public. And then it became a question that if there was a building that currently wanted to go through the process of remodeling, where they didn't have to come back in front of us and they put first floor in, they, we, we wouldn't have the ability to kind of say, hey, we need you to give us public right of way to be able to allow the first floor, because currently it's an allowable use.
I read the ordinance wrong, by my fault.
Sure.
I read allowance of first floor apartment, said do not face Water Street as meaning they did face Water, nevermind, I just.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so I think it was just striking the first floor approved use currently. So that it would require that they would have to come before to be able to ever put first floor facing the water. And during that process, we're hoping that whoever's in the planning commission or the council, they would look and say, we would only grant this if we have the access. Kind of like how you did, like when we were doing Butler and that, where you said that, yes, you can build it, but it needs to get guarantee that you continue to have the public access to the boardwalk. And the same thing is when we're looking at. And the same thing is when we're looking at six forty and six fifty, if it ever comes back before us. Even though there's no boardwalk. On either side of them, I think one of the things we probably would look to would be, okay, are they going to make that section? Of those two buildings with the idea that some point down the road, maybe you could have full boardwalk access from Coglin Park all the way up to, you know, Retro Boat. I don't know if that's ever possible, but we might as well start planning for it. And that was the idea that we were putting together with the waterfront preservation district. Was that to give any exceptions along the way that you'd have to have that public access. Otherwise, if they meet all the standards and they're not asking for anything special, so if they want to build a new one and they meet all the setbacks, they meet the coverage. They could currently, the way it's currently drafted. They could build because it wouldn't have to come before us because they meet all the standards, so it would be approved based upon the current zoning. And there's no guarantee if they've, they met every standard, they didn't want to change the setbacks, they didn't want to change any of the limitations that are in the ordinance. They could then say that they own all the way to the water and they could take away that public access. And that's what, that's what we're trying to eliminate here. Correct, David?
Yes, that's, that's correct. So and it could be, I mean. Ultimately, we're trying to incentivize public access. Through walk or open space and, you know, these are things that we've listed through the P U D process now. That we can eliminate setbacks or reduce them and now allow for the first floor apartments facing the waterfront. So we're trying to incentivize that rather than, than. Because we can't really require public access on private property. We're trying to incentivize it, so that's correct.
Correct. And so our. Public hearing next month would be on the language, just basically to remove. The ability to have water facing. Residential.
Correct. A- as, as a.
As a, as a permitted use currently, but they still can apply for a P U D. And then make a request that could be granted, but as part of that process, we could try to negotiate for an incentive. Public access. To the, to the boardwalk.
Yes, so we're eliminating the, the, the buy right use of an existing building with no significant exterior changes, that, that's a permitted use for first floor. Uh apartments facing the water, that's going to be struck. Section two is, is if they're building something new, it's a special land use now as a part of the, the section two, uh first floor upper. So we're striking that. And so the only way they could do ground floor water facing is if they provide waterfront access. Um either by open space or the, the boardwalk walkway.
Then. You should know this, but. Do we, do we need a vote on this or is it just something we can?
For the motion to set the public hearing?
Oh, the motion to set the public hearing, I guess we would need.
I move to.
Well, but I'm sorry, before we go there, I just quick. What is the mechanism to preserve? The access and the right of way for public transiting the property? So new construction goes up. Falls under, they, they go through the process of a P U D. They agree that they're going to allow a boardwalk or whatever, end to end property transit for public. What's to stop that from changing in the future? I'm just showing my ignorance here, but. It's not an easement, correct?
I thought it was viewed as an easement. David, I don't know, did you hear the question? And I know this is kind of going outside of what we're doing, but if we had. You know, an applicant and down the road and we made an approval. Contingent on them keeping the boardwalk or the public, you know, the setback as public. Is that technically an easement? Or, I mean, how do you enforce it down the road?
Sure, um, uh, we, we don't prescribe that in the ordinance now, um, but I think that's something that we work out through the, um. The P U D approval, uh, we'd rely on Jacob and Trent, uh, it may be something through like a deed restriction or an easement or something of that nature, so. Uh, it's not prescribed, but they would have to demonstrate that it would be permanently preserved as part of their approval. So. Uh, yeah, that may be more of a legal question during review.
And I would think that obviously because it would be in. The approval, it would also be subject if they were sold a property because it's. It would stay with the property.
Well, that was my second.
What I worry about is exactly, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying. And I want to believe what you're saying. But I, I, I just worry about. Something being missed and it ends up that we lose control of that public access.
Right, which is what we're trying to eliminate here.
I know, but. Other than just not allowing it, period.
Yeah, which is kind of the direction I was, I wasn't going in that direction, but I was thinking that, um.
But that's going to happen no matter any type somebody comes before us to have something built. We cannot, I mean, if somebody buys Coral Gables and they want to build something on it and they don't want to. If they said that they're not going to negotiate public access, we don't have the right to say, no, you have to.
No, that's correct.
So, so whether or not you're.
But then they have to abide by the current setbacks and. Height restrictions and all of that. The whole, you know, and I, I apologize because I wasn't really around for the deliberation of the waterfront district, but. You know, this, this idea that it goes as a, as a P U D. In my mind, it's opening up a lot of subjectivity. To the approval process, right? So. Well, I think. I'm just trying to be very careful here in. How I think this through and how it works, because essentially, if I understand it correctly. Somebody comes in and they say, we want to develop this piece of property, so it's just pick, pick, pick a lot that has no structure on it. We're going to allow the public access along the waterfront. So they're allowed to put.
No, it's.
They, they, they go under P U D status. The city could allow them to. Greatly reduce all the setback requirements to allow these first floor residential condos, correct?
They would be. It could be, if, if, if part of the overall plan that was presented. Um, one, you can't require, like David was saying, if somebody wants to build, you would not be able to. Require them. To give you public access. But during, if, if they wanted to build something that was outside of what is an approved use. Then they would be able, then they would have to actually get the approval and then you could negotiate. That's part of it to have the, but there's no way that that's the best. David, we were doing this, that was the best we were able to come up with was to be able to have it as a P U D to where you could try to negotiate. That you would get the public access as a, so it's just about as far as you could go without like, say, we're going to have eminent domain to take, you know, the, the water.
No, I understand that, that piece, that. The two things that come, come to my mind are, one. As I already mentioned, understanding what the legal mechanisms are to protect whatever easement or right of way that. Is being. Offered up right to as a. Negotiation, right, for, for the. Requirements to build on the property. And two is, I want to, obviously, I think everybody in this room wants to avoid any type of situation where. You know. Somebody comes in, whether it's. Somebody buying a condo, first floor condo or whatever, that all of a sudden decides they don't want. You know, people that that's their property, right? And then whenever the lawyers get involved, right? And everybody loses, so. Those are the concerns that I have.
Yep.
And I think that, and I don't know if it's Trent or David, if you are able to address that, again, it goes back to that, if we. If it. The public access was granted in a future P U D application. How do we guarantee that it stays public? I mean, what, what, what mechanisms do we have to make sure that they can't fence it off? And say it's their property?
Yeah, we can certainly look into that issue more. I, I believe that. Most of these P U D processes come with like an accompanying agreement and you can do a lot more with those agreements. So I've been involved in some of them before where the developer voluntarily agreed to, you know, pay for certain road improvements or things of that nature. Where, you know, the city maybe wouldn't want to condition that directly, you can have them sort of voluntarily agree to it. So that's one possible mechanism, but, um, you know, we can look into some others as well. Um, generally, I think the flexibility of a P U D process is helpful in this situation, um, to allow us some leeway to figure out the best way to address that.
Okay.
And, and just, I'll shut up after this one.
It's okay.
Is. Talk hypotheticals here, right? So getting back to the example where somebody, we. Somebody goes through the process of P U D, negotiates with the city. Gets favorable terms, at least both sides feel they're favorable terms, and then down the road, the city feels. Maybe this wasn't the right thing to do. What happens if somebody else comes in and tries to go through the exact same process? Going through the P U D and wants to do the exact same thing. Can the city change the terms and conditions that they've already granted somebody else? Or is the city stuck with that decision now and they have to allow? Other landowners the same privilege if they, if they try and enter into a P U D negotiation with the same parameters?
Well, I think. You're always going to have prior precedents that will come up during any type of approval process. But that's having it come before planning commission or having something go to city council. It can always change based upon who's sitting in those seats. And I think that's, you know. Why you try to have everything written the way, the way you do in the codes and in the ordinances. But then when you do allow, that's the whole person of the P U D is it allows that type of flexibility where you can really look at it from a standpoint. Does this make sense for the community? And you look at all the, the. Benefits, you know, of it, and that's what gives the existing planning commission. And so I think that's. It's my opinion is why we have that ability as opposed to, you know, just being really specific and say, you have to meet this, and if you don't, then it can't be approved. Because there's too many times where you do, maybe a special situation that you hadn't thought about and you want to give that ability. And otherwise our codes, I think, would be extremely long if you try to list everything that you think that would be appropriate.
Hey, and on that point also, if I may to answer. Question, I don't think there ever is going to be an exactly same E U D application. Because if no other reason, the location's going to be different. It's going to be further down the street or further up the street, or it's going to be a, a, a bigger lot or smaller lot. So. I think there's, there is precedent is, is an important factor. Um, but I, I don't think that any P U D application is going to be exactly the same as going to be for it because it's not going to be on the exact same lot. Traffic flow varies from block to block, um, you know, any number of years, so.
That's all the waivers that somebody's asking for are going to be slightly different also. So I mean, the whole point of a P U D is to grant waivers in, in return for public benefit. So with a, with a, being concerned about precedence when chances are, you, I, I would doubt you're going to get a similar enough plan unit development to, um. To, to be concerned, but that's more for legal counsel to address.
But, but again, it's, and again, it's pure hypothetical, it's if the city all of a sudden determine, you know what, first floor residential is not a good thing to do. We opened up the door with this one development. The only remedy at that point in time really is to change then the zoning. Right, um. Ordinances, correct? Because you've already granted it to one, you're going to have to grant it to somebody else if they apply for it.
Which you do have the power to do. Obviously, yeah, yeah.
Are you suggesting that we take it out of the special land use opportu, or the, that, because we're taking it out of the available use rate with this change that we're suggesting, so you. Take it out of the ability even if it was a PDU or for them to, for. I wasn't suggesting, I was more trying to educate myself, but it is a. I mean, I don't know whether I fully understand the pros and cons of, of fully of having first floor residential, but.
May have a big, a discussion, you know, down, down the road. I think the. When we were doing, because you weren't part of it, we were doing the waterfront preservation. It was, it's a long boardwalk. Long. Stretch of lands and lots that faced the river. The idea that yes, and I would agree with some of the citizens that have said. Along the riverfront, it should be all commercial, but we are still a small town. And you had to really kind of factor in, is it possible that you would be able to have commercial down the entire riverwalk? And make it viable, especially if you have commercial only facing water. Now, some places, like when you get down towards the end, like on the six forty, six fifty Water Street, those buildings are so narrow. That you would not be able to have something facing the street and have something else facing the back. You know, so you didn't have to worry that you couldn't really have a first floor there, but if we looked at Coral Gables as an example or some of that land. That's actually wide enough that you could have commercial facing the front and something else facing the back. The, my recollection was that. It, you know, you wouldn't make certain that you had all commercial, you know, on Water Street and that you didn't have, you know, condominium or residential on those first floors. You also didn't have garage doors, you know, so somebody did have. Residential on the first floor, they could not have a garage facing Water Street where you got a garage door, you know, accessing your residential unit. So that was. The commercial along water was put in to protect. The, and make certain that you always have enough commerce, kind of commercial space, but then on the waterfront. Yes, if it turns out that somebody wants to do like Mermaid did in Baldi's and they can run successful restaurants, fantastic. But if somebody thought that the best use was to have. First floor residential, it may be the best use and it may be something that's beneficial to the community, but it would need to go through. A special land use in the P U D. And then you are relying, you are relying on whoever's sitting in those seats at that time.
Yeah.
But I. I always want to kind of believe that any person that lives in Sagatuck is going to understand the importance of the waterfront. And maintaining the waterfront and anything that they were reviewing. I mean, yeah, the majority, I mean, you always could think of like a conspiracy, somebody buys all the land, they try to stack the council or they say, you know, it's up. Which I guess, you know, is always going to be a risk. Yeah, yeah.
Me too.
Um, well, and I think the, the, you know. The only way that, I mean, since we can't compel people to put the boardwalk, the only way that our best shot at. Getting it all the way along is a P U D even.
Because I remember during the discussion, like when we were looking, you know, David, again, I think all, everybody else was here, but he put together all the lots. That were waterfront facing and you kind of rated them as to are they a high risk of being potentially redeveloped, low risk? And there was a number of them, you know, that were in the high to mid, medium. That we could see, you know, potentially being redeveloped. Some of them were north of, um. Francis, that are in the area where. There's currently no boardwalk and, you know, the idea was it'd be great if you could somehow, if they had to go through the P U D, that you at least. Make it available so that someday down the road, if they ever did, you know, ship to shore ever was to sell and you wanted to redevelop, now all of a sudden, can you make it? To where they have, you know. So the idea, it may be during future generations, but you could possibly someday see a boardwalk down the entire river. Um, you know, from one park to the other.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, just one suggestion, uh, based on the concern noted, uh, earlier, um, about the, uh, the permanent preservation of that, of that area for, uh, public access. Um, and this might be something that, that Trent could wordsmith for us for next time, but I was thinking something of the nature, we could finish that paragraph with. And that public access is preserved for the lifetime of the development. Through a deed restriction easement agreement or other legal instrument reviewed and approved by the city attorney and city manager, something of that nature, just to. To, to just nail that down that we, and it almost gave us a reminder in future years that that needs to be. Recorded or agreed upon and, and set legally that public access, uh, it must be maintained through the, the lifetime of the project. Uh, or perpetuity, uh, that's something we could certainly discuss. But that would give us just a reminder to make sure that's done in any future P U D review that takes advantage of this, um, this relief.
Very good.
It's good.
Yeah. Great. So did we already? Have the motion for the public hearing?
Try again. No, 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 this is good. Um, I moved that, um. The public hearing be set for October seventeenth. To amend the downtown water preservation district ordinance. Have the ordinance number. Particulars that. Particulars that are being discussed tonight. That sufficiently.
Is that sufficient? Or do we have to read the language that's in the agenda?
No.
Okay, yeah, because it's it's one five four zero three eight, one five four one one three.
Oh, there it is. One five four point zero three eight. Got it. Thank you.
Been moved and seconded. We will ask for.
Who's the second?
All right, Anderson?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
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 You'll share me?
Yes.
Yes. And the last item on. The new business was discussion of meeting start times. And I know we had discussed this briefly at a previous meeting. Um, council has moved to a six thirty. Um, start time, some of the, yes, some other organizations have gone to six thirty, some have even gone to six o'clock. And I think we were all trying to be very considerate because Ann still has a full-time job. I did speak with Ann and she is fine with a six thirty. And she said six could be pushing it. And I think for future, you know, commission, commission members who may still be working. Six is probably too early, but six thirty, I think, would make it consistent.
Yep. So moved.
That'd be great with me.
To change the start time for future planning commission regular meetings to six thirty P M.
I would think this is probably just a voice, but I'll have you go ahead and call it.
Anderson?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
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 Yes. So then, next time you show up at seven o'clock, we'll be like three fourths way through the day.
Yeah, I'll I'll make sure to remind everyone for the first couple of meetings at least.
Right.
Now that our meetings that end at ten, you know, our kindness hopefully, no, it's great.
We never know, it could go back to it. Very good. So that takes care of the new business communication. I didn't have any communications that were in the packet or that I saw come through, correct?
I I don't believe so. If I did, I I apologize and I'll um.
Okay.
Release them.
Yeah, no, I didn't see any. We had the report of officer, so we have the zoning administrator activity report, which is, you know. It's now back to being included. Which leads us to the last public comment. Uh, this can be public comment on anything. In regards, you'd like to address the planning commission with, you would just come up to the microphone, again, state your name. And your address and keep your comments to three minutes. And if anyone is online that would like to be able to speak, then just please raise your hand so we could acknowledge you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Chairman and and council members. Um, Chris Peterson, seven forty-two Pleasant Street. I was actually on the planning commission and uh, when this all started with the Devos's buying the B and B. And I wasn't on the council, but my understanding behind the scenes was that they were going to close the boardwalk and the city negotiated the street end. To them. And so we were very careful then, uh, when you hit the park, you go on on north. Uh, when Jim Dewey put his uh application in for his home there, we made him do for uh first floor resident, uh, first floor commercial. In front and back. Um, and I know you negotiated some way with the butler so that the easement was in that.
Right.
So they have to keep the boardwalk. Um, you know, if 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 it would be smooth or simple, you could simply say no commercial. First floor front or back. And put that into the zone, but uh. At least putting some way to maneuver if you get caught. Because they can right now, right now. So he put in an application and bought one of those plots, they can cut it off. Thank you for doing this tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Anyone online? I don't see any, so we will close out public comments. We will move us to the commissioner comments. Any comments here? Mark?
I've shared enough.
Happy fall, everyone. Yeah.
Happy fall to everyone, exactly. Very good. Then with that, I will ask if a motion, motion to adjourn.
You made it.
There are most to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have some favor.
Yes.